All this meeting of the Olmsted Township Board of Trustees to order at 7:32 PM. Will the fiscal officer please call the law?
Trustee, do you hear it? Here. Trustee Cole.
Present.
And trustee's bear.
Present.
Legal counsel Jim Massey here. And fiscal officer Brian Gillett is here with staff and.
I apply to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to save our public hearing here for the end of the meeting. If that's okay with the board regarding the CDBG application.
Sure.
I don't believe, Gary.
I'm sorry, I got to the meeting just as we were saying. There is a sign in sheet. Do you want to hold off and pass this out?
Could, yeah, could you pass this out now and folks in the audience if you could sign the sign in sheet? I guess, I guess we'll just, we'll do this now then. So basically, you've all probably heard me give this spiel before. Cuyahoga County has a community development block grant program that's funded by the federal government. And there are certain things that are eligible for it. They're supposed to have a community wide benefit. They can relate to housing improvements, infrastructure improvements. We have in the past used them for certain sidewalks. We have done ADA ramps, things of that nature. We have previously applied for Greenway Trail funding. And the county is very graciously giving us a second bite at the apple here. Because the timeline for the Greenway Trail, because we got these federal NOACA dollars, it got a little bit stretched out. So if you get these federal dollars, it takes longer to meet the ODOT engineering requirements. And therefore, that kind of pushed our timeline out a little bit past October this year to really get things going, which would be the deadline for CDBG. So I think it's the intent of the board to potentially apply for something different. I don't know if anybody here has any thoughts about, you know, improvements they'd like to see to Olmsted Township. I know that there's, some communities use this for storefront revitalization. Obviously need buy in from local business owners to make that happen. I think there's a lot of need for that here, whether that's up in the Columbia Park area or at Sterns and Bagley, in our town center. So I will be quiet now, but hopefully I've given you all a little bit to, to think about. And I don't know if anybody has any suggestions for stuff they'd like to see. Board members included, if you'd like.
Shady roadside.
My second thought.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Just to parlay on what you said, you know, we've received some feedback on social media and some emails that probably the number one thing that people are looking for are sidewalks.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's important that if we apply for a sidewalk again, as we did on Cook Road, that we make sure that it qualifies and we justify the community wide benefit, right? And that it helps folks who live in our low to moderate income census blocks or areas of the community that are in a quote unquote investment target area, which is essentially areas that have older housing, which we have a lot of in the township. So it's important that while sidewalks are a need, that we justify based on the requirements to get the grant, which I think we could probably justify the shady roadside. But I just want to make sure that folks are good at that, communities interested in that. Or maybe folks in the community have other ideas. I think we're probably going to go for the Greenway again next year. But it just, the time wasn't right.
We got a little bit more information about the Greenway, where it is.
Yeah, so basically, if you think of the power lines on Sterns, following the power lines to Fitch, where we are right now at the admin building, that's the section that we're talking about doing. And then the Falls has a much smaller section. And then it actually links up with our area again at the Brentwood Park, if we actually complete the full vision with the Greenway.
That's been a thought for many years.
Yeah, and we're very fortunate to have over $280,000 from NOACA to, to, to start to make that a reality. It's just the engineering requirements we have to meet at the federal level were just, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're going to take us some time.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, anybody else have questions, comments?
Well, I like the idea of kind of beautifying the shady and Bagley area.
Yeah.
You can use some personal, I mean, restaurants there are phenomenal. Technically phenomenal. And then the people, the coffee shop and all that stuff. I, I, I'm sort of, it's great. So to beautify a little bit, I mean, if you're walking along the side of the road, it's just.
Right.
There's something that can be done with that. I'm not saying that I know what.
Sure.
But, you know.
Well, I, I think it's helpful to have, you know, whether folks are visiting the new nature preserve and dog park or whether they live at Evergreen Apartments or what have you, that, that section of unfinished sidewalk on Shady could really help a lot of folks access both, both the park, the new park, but also all of the really exciting stuff we, we have in the works for town center. And we have an item on the agenda for that today. So hopefully that will start to really work towards the beautifying that you're looking for here. Anybody else, anything else?
Bob? Mr. Or sidewalks. Sidewalks is definitely a big, yes. And any drainage relief along Bagley would be appreciated as well.
Yeah.
Especially from our high school area.
Yep.
Be appreciated.
Yeah.
I don't know if the new dog park or that area, if there's going to be any lighting.
It's a good point.
Outdoor lighting out through that area.
Yeah, that's a really good.
Driven by a couple of times, really dark back there. So I don't know if there's going to be any lighting on trails or any.
Yeah.
Sort of illumination.
Yeah, Gary, I think we could probably look at the lighting side of it. And Eric, I know that we've been, we've been talking to the county about Bagley flooding long before I got here, right? I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, you're welcome to.
I know Gary's been in progress meetings with the county, well aware of it. And there's plans that a drainage inlet is being installed there. I've been waiting that for, you know, a lot of issues. Seen the high water sign and put them off.
Yeah.
I am looking forward to them installing the inlet, so it's definitely.
All right.
I've seen people doing, talking about lighting, particularly for park areas. I would hope we would avoid, you know, the kind of light.
Yeah, anything that really gets in the space, yeah.
Light the line.
Yeah.
Low level.
Right.
Add, add more of that, and I, you know, but below that.
Yeah. The bare minimum for safety, you know?
Yeah, we would look at the front end illumination of everything, just to make sure it wasn't.
That's a nice, yeah, that's a nice idea.
We've thought about lighting right now, and we've applied to the Senate.
Yeah.
It's kind of our phase, five line phase two.
Yeah.
They're going along with the buildings, so.
Yeah.
Good, good, good point.
Yeah. That's great. Well, I appreciate everybody's feedback. I'm just going to read this for the record, so that everybody understands. I, I kind of like went off the cuff explaining what this is, but I'll just say it. Olmsted Township is eligible to apply for funding from the federal Community Development Block Grant Funds administered by Cuyahoga County through the Department of Development. These funds can be utilized for a variety of housing, economic development, and community improvement projects. Residents are encouraged to participate in a public meeting to express their opinions on local development needs or to submit their opinions in writing. And so I guess that will conclude the public hearing portion of this. Can you note that that was at 7:41, Brian? I just want to show that we didn't just throw this on the agenda and not, not actually, you know, take it up, take it seriously. Because I really appreciate this, this opportunity from the county here to be able to potentially still draw on funds. We have no presentation. I believe we have no public comment related to the agenda. We'll go straight to the Township Administrator Report. If that's all right. If we all ask you.
Evening, everyone. This is a clinical Sunday afternoon or evening now. Sorry, I think my report says the 18th of April, I'll change that for the, for the ready decision.
Okay.
You want to notice that when, you know, previous three weeks ago, we've been getting a significant amount of rain? I just want to, you know, remind everyone to be conscientious. If you're driving around and you see an issue, please, you know, notify the Township or the Land Service Department or myself. You know, I know Eric and his guys do a great job riding around the town, but obviously you can't be everywhere, everywhere, every time. So if you see any drainage issues, it was really what most importantly, we started calling the issue. We had a postponement, unfortunately, of our dog park and nature trail. We're trying to get the grass to come in and we wouldn't be able to sustain, you know, the dogs riding around. So that is mostly gone currently. We are shooting sometime in mid-June, depending on how the grass comes in. We did have our Arbor Day celebration on Thursday, the 22nd. We had a dedication on a tree, I think it was to, we'll say more about that, I won't steal it. The Fire Department submitted a SAFER grant for three more firefighters, so hopefully we will be successful on that application. We also applied for the State Capitol budget and one time strategic community investment funding through the SAG. Those were new on the A, and we had two applications. One was for our town center renovation, so Eric, the, the bang of the area, that, that's the focus on that area. And then we also applied for our nature trail and dog park phase two. So we, volume, development, tree lighting, we applied that second with that, so hopefully we'll be successful on both applications. We had our second round of workplace conduct and ethics training on the 9th of April. Now all employees have attended that training. And we also stand for the warning of that, so that'll be now just integrated into our ongoing process for new hires. The Community Resource Guide has finally been finalized. Want to thank everybody for their input on that. Julie's working on getting that out. She's working with Master Credit, so we hope to have that finalized by the end of next week and then out of the fall. There's rainwater. The township was awarded $50,000 for the Community Development Supplemental Grant for the Greenway Trail. I think we are going to table that at this point, just due to some timing, just want to get some things figured out with the county. I think that was on our agenda tonight, the table, the table, the 16th.
Right.
As Mr. Holman mentioned, we are going to be applying for 2024 CDBG funds through the county. We plan to, as a membership of sidewalks, and that's about what we're letting the sidewalk from Sterns over to the nature trail. We then, again, we appreciate the county for giving us a nice crack at that. And then I just want to remind everybody that on June 18th at 6:00 PM here in this room, the county will be here to give a, in fact, a sex annual reappraisal presentation. If you have any questions about that process and how they go about it, please attend. We did post something on social media. If you have any other questions, feel free to contact myself or review me, and we'll, we'll give you all the information again. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Gary. Yeah, I just want to highlight one thing on there, and it's the property tax kind of update from the county. The county is required by the state to undergo a process and update every three years, right? Based on market trends and then the actual reappraisal every six years, where somebody's actually driving around, looking at, you know, the different homes and updating their values. They're, they're required by the state to do that, has nothing to do with Olmsted Township. We just felt that it was important, especially in a community that is solely dependent on your residential property tax hours, that we be transparent about what this process is, how it works, so that folks can, can better understand it, better understand their tax bill. And when you, you get your updated valuation in the mail, you understand, you know, what recourse you have and if you'd like to avail yourself of that recourse. So I definitely would encourage everybody to attend. We are just the messenger, so we appreciate it. All right, thank you. I will move on to trustee and committee reports. I believe trustee's bear is going to defend, dispense with her report.
I am.
She has a jet, but I, I know Jeremy's going to come in soon on Economic Development. So we'll, we'll hear about the jet very soon. Trustee Cole, I don't know if you have, are you getting?
Nothing to report.
Okay. And then for my part on the cemetery, I would just add that the annual cemetery board meeting with the city of Olmsted Falls is coming up, as this is a joint venture between both of us. That is May 14th in the evening, I believe it's around 7 o'clock.
6:45.
6:25, thank you. 6:45, anybody's welcome to attend. It is a very, very, very small portion of your tax dollars to go towards that cemetery. So it is important. And for my other part on the cemetery board, I would say that we're continuing to try to structure the cemetery board finances better so that we're being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And with that, I'll be signing some paperwork up at First Federal and at PNC this weekend to make sure that things are, you know, appropriately, you know, in CDs and appropriately invested and all that fun stuff. So that's my report on the cemetery board. We will move on to department reports. We'll start with the Fire Department. Black and Chief Dahlhausen.
Thank you.
Well, everyone, thank you. Black and white report first, that we hired a new part-time firefighter named Alex Colpas. I accept that position as a part-time, we did start two days ago. We welcomed him aboard, head rental park kind of roster with six footers. We also did new interview 18 inmates for a full-time position at Old Dunford Dust. Those were out on Monday. And just to give you a quick update, we didn't give a conditional offer today to Mark Hollek. He is currently a part-time firefighter in Olmsted Falls. Process is ongoing for a full-time fire chief. We expect that to be needed soon. We do have a part-time firefighter, Kyle Hag. He's a homeowner of Cleveland Heights. He did complete his fifth year of employment at Olmsted Township Fire Department. And sadly, we did another resignation for part-time. One of our firefighters got hired full-time at Watson Alliance, and he, Brian, ran his law office. Our training, EMS training this month, still working concentrating on shock treatment, different types of shock. Sent to Southwest Hospital. A lot of guys have attended additional trainings. Paul Rassel and Koy Shinsky attended a environmental health conference. That's a big red down for us. That was in Akron, appreciate that. Dan Schreiber and Paul Rassel also, they attended a car seat safety install class. I'm not sure if everybody knows that, the car seat installs. We checked them out, one of the few places in this area, so we're really proud of that. Myself and Koy Shinsky also attended a lithium battery emergency class. I'm a gentleman detective. You know, inquiries and all, it was pretty important. I mean, we're able to see some of the new protocols and techniques out there. Coming facilities, received a call, completed for the flooring. There was a new flooring down at the station. That was completed, it should be also starting in the next 12 weeks. Station stairway prepared on demand. Just to remind you, there are dangers due to open sprinkler. Grant updates, nothing's really changed there. The Ohio State Fire Marshal grant with applications are still waiting to go. And as administrator, here you mentioned, we did submit the SAFER grant. That grant probably won't hear anything early, as it's upcoming over. Any other screening still have right now, we're going to get supplies. Some other additional things, real quick. Tri-SE students, periodic students are completing ride time with us. So you might see an extra one or two people on board if we're called. Also, Polaris is about to schedule some more students also, so we're glad to train them and help them along their way. And then just some statistics, their total runs as of Tuesday, we're at 109. We are 130 runs for the last year. So, and they're, that's, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Very good. I have a quick question for you, yeah. So regarding the city for grant application, in the past, I, I know the last time we applied, it took way longer than they had thought. I think there was way more funds involved from Congress. And so we had to kind of advocate, especially because our, our staffing levels were, were very low at that time. And so we had talked with Senator Jared Brown's office, and the senator was willing to give us a letter of support to the FEMA director that oversees SAFER. I think that was probably helpful in actually securing a grant, saved us about a million dollars over three years, about our staff, helped us meet our staffing needs. This is less of a question, more of a comment slash directive. Can, can you work with Gary to make sure that we get in contact with the senator's office and get a similar letter of support for our currently submitted SAFER grant?
Sure, yeah, we have. Now, the processes, they, they come out in periods. There's, there's a first reward, and there's a second. Last year, what happened was they did interview some additional funds, and we were in the final stages, and we were happy to do that last time, come on the floor, so.
Definitely get together here and. Thanks, Dave. Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mooreman?
Yeah.
Could I just make a comment?
Sure.
So Dave, this may be your last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I just, I thought I'd just send in the board and to the people on the other meeting. Dave has done a wonderful job. And I thought, you know, I just want to appreciate him for that.
Yeah.
So he stepped into a tough position. And Dave, I can't thank you enough, and you go ahead and break that.
The wine hanging down right there. It was a, you know, the wine hanging down. Yeah, right there.
I was looking for, yeah, right there.
Yeah, we, we always.
I, I just thought it was important to acknowledge that he stepped into a tough situation and was a real palm of water, so to speak. So I, I thought it was just important to say.
Thank you, Gary.
No, he has done an amazing job. I mean, just amazing.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm happy to do whatever you guys need, and it was nice working with all of them. Don't have a relationship, got to know you a little bit more, so.
That's perfect. Adversity brings character. Yeah, demonstrated tremendous character. All right, very good. Next up, the Service Department report, Director Williams.
Good evening. I have to say my name's wrong too.
That's all right.
Good evening, everyone. Service Department's report for May 2nd. U County updates the Sterns Road, the Sterns Road project. It's moving along, northbound lane was completed through swings and bends between Bagley and swing and bends and economy, that business. So that has been done, so make sure when you're making that left, you know that they take straight a center line and gates for that northbound. And they're moving along as far as, tentatively, there might be next week, some road closes on the southbound lane to start the process of completing the concrete at Old Dunford Town Lane. So it's exciting, they're, they're getting close. Also, sort of along with that, this is a North Bridgeville thing, but just be aware, on the 29th, the Bagley Road Bridge over the turnpike was closed. So Cook Road to Bagley, or I'm sorry, Cook Road to Morey is the detour. So I just want to make you aware that there is signage there letting you know. But going westbound of Bagley is closed. Awesome township news, as the administrator had said. Excitement as far as in our nature trail dog park. Fencing was completed. My guys did a whale of a job planting 40 pretty mature trees that looks phenomenal. It's changed the landscape a little tremendously. Multitude of different species, oats, elves, did some evergreens. Yeah, means my last, so it just looks good. And I think, and along with that, Andy Allen Seaworth, he's our arborist and tree consultant, if you will. But he was there that day, they had the ARB Day that started this. And went over the correct process with the guys of planting trees and gave the most success out of making sure they make it. So with that, as administrator mentioned, on the 22nd, we had our first Arbor Day. This gets us a step closer to being on true City USA, which is a great thing. An important day, we celebrate how important our greenery is. Not only did we do that, we dedicated a tree for our Mrs. Jeanine Kress. Opportunity, this is a beautiful way to commemorate some of those achievements while contributing to the environment. And that tree happened to be, we chose was a berm. And the reason for that, there is perhaps no mightier, more inspiring tree than the berm. It's a gesture of honoring their perseverance, wisdom, and contributions with the hope that their impact will endure and continue to grow over time, much like the majestic berm. So it's a very impactful tree for an impactful person, so that's the reason. Also, moving along, we performed our branch chip shift this week. That was on the 29th and 30th. We collected about 45 cubic yards of debris, and we had two residents that accepted two loads. So that's something that we offer our residents, if they're interested in the chips. Our ODOT winter contract passed over this past weekend. That's our 2,000, 1,000 tons that we are, will be doing for the 24 and 25. Facility ceiling completed at the Fire Department. Excited to report that the electrical improvements for the sign on Fitch and Bagley, that sign now is illuminated. And excited, it's taken a long time to get that sign illuminated, but now it is. And we are working, they completed the electrical improvements at Town Hall for our new, upcoming digital site at our market, if you will. And of course, we're still working, many of us on the police parking lot expansion. Our programs, bulk trash drop off will be this Saturday, May 3rd at the Service Department between 8:00 and noon. And I also want to talk about our shredding event on April 22nd at the Service Department. A lot of participation, we had about right around 240 people come through the line. So as always, that's, shows a lot of interest to our residents of the department that is. And lastly, our training, LTAP training, work zone safety control that will occur on May 23rd.
Thank you, Director. I have a quick comment, and it's just that I've heard lots of really nice things about the, the Dog Park and Nature Trail from folks in the community. And I know you and your team have worked really hard to make that a reality and to get it where it is today. And I know you're continuing to work with, I think, some, some Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts who are interested in continuing to make it even better. So I just want to commend you and your team for doing that. I don't know if there are any other questions or comments from the board.
It's a great ride. We enjoyed.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Police Department report. Chief Fett.
Right. There's one, my, my name's wrong as well. So, but as usual, I'm a person all recognized by personnel over the board. You always want to say, you know, thank you, trustee Tom Cole, for bringing to our attention the Second Annual Secret Service Touch and Truck Event that took place at Polaris, Polaris Center. I was unaware of this, this is only second year they've done, and it's a pretty big event. They asked if we were going to have anybody in attendance, I said, no, I was unfamiliar with it. But, you know, definitely look into it, we did. We sent three of our officers today, and I'm really proud of the three officers that we sent there because they did an outstanding job. It was, started. Sergeant Spagnola and Troy in Maryland and Troyman Air, uh, that really made the township look good and, and our agency looked really well. If you want to see it, you can go to our, um, Police Department's webpage, our Facebook page. And if you take a look at our Facebook, they got some pictures of, uh, what they had there. They took, uh, quite a bit of apparatus. They had our full trailer. Uh, out there. They had the bikes. They had the plastic shields. They had a table set up. Um, they had, they had just, uh, they even brought the drones with them. So it was really cool. A lot of people really liked our, our station, if you will. And, uh, we're going to just continue to do that every year. Um, it's a really big event and, and we recommend it to everybody because, uh, when you look into this thing, it's it's over eighty different agencies. And, uh, like I said, it's only the second annual one that they, at their career fair, but it's set up by the US Secret Service. But they have the higher state control there, the FBI, US Coast Guard, TSA, United, uh, Marshal Service, local police and fire. Uh, there was a lot to see and a lot to do. And then there was a lot of recruiting stations from police departments in the interior. So, um, yeah, our guys were excited about it. They did a, they did an outstanding job and I, I thank them for it. And Tom, thanks for, you know, bringing that to our attention. It was really cool.
Glad you guys were able to make it.
Yeah, yeah. It is really exciting. Um, but a couple of other things too. We've got a lot of training going on as we move into this, uh, month here. Um, we found one that was great. It was in Westlake. It was only a hundred dollar school. And, uh, it's from a top tier, uh, company that came in and Westlake, uh, had a de-escalation instructor school. We were fortunate enough to send three officers who are, are, uh, firearms instructors and are defense tactics instructors. We sent Sergeant Spagnola, you know, Officer Killers and, and Barry Lynn for that. Um, that was on four seventeen and eighteen in Westlake PD. Uh, then we also had our detective attend to Cyber Tips Investigation School. And then, uh, this past week, I think tomorrow is final day. He's, uh, or actually finishes today, now that I look at it. Is, um, we have another firearm instructor, which is Jeff Kirby. Just been with us just a little under five years. He has a lot of interest in firearms. So we've, uh, put him onto the staff of our training division for that. And he's doing his rifle instructor course. And, uh, got to meet with Jeff this, uh, during the week midweek because, um, Lieutenant and I were also down in Columbus, intended the Ohio Association Chiefs of Police Conference, uh, where we did a banner show of multiple courses that were offered to everybody attended. But in the evening, we asked Jeff, he was only, uh, eighteen minutes away. He wanted to come over and visit us for Darren. He did. And, uh, so it was nice to, uh, you know, have a promo of the last five years of the mountain. So they added staff as well. So it was a good time. Uh, and also we have, uh, right now they're, they are barely making it through. They look like they're very rough, but they're going through one of the hardest uh, courses that Opaunah puts on. It's, uh, it's the police cyclist course and it is very grueling, but Tyler Cradick and Danny Titus, who uh, has off the dance, fifty-two years old, doing it. But, uh, to put it on that fry seed, it's a forty hour class. If anybody that, uh, uh, decides that they want to be a bike officer for the town, we put them through this, uh, growing class. And, um, yeah, it's not easy. And, uh, the weather's been pretty warm, but, uh, they're doing a great job. They finished. Tomorrow is graduation day and I'm sure they're going to pass. Uh, a couple of things with, uh, equipment, our shotguns that we currently have and our patrol cars are about fifteen years old. So we're just exploring some options, some, uh, possible replacements. We need to, um, we, uh, I've been talking with the DNA Army at Columbia Station. Um, they had, um, Brennan model thirteen hundreds that they were able to, uh, do a T and A for us. So we're testing evaluating, uh, those, uh, to see how they stack up against the what we currently have. And, uh, we'll just make our decision from there. A couple of other things, um, we purchased the indoor outdoor day bright weather monitor or TV, if you will, with tripod and stand. Um, we used, uh, a, a similar TV at the last event at that, uh, second manual hunter drop. And during the, the bright sunlight, it was hard to see. People had a hard time seeing, uh, the screen of what we were, we were playing on, like a PowerPoint that was looping. Uh, we found that, uh, by getting something like this, that's a more of a day bright screen, it's, it's reliable, it's rugged, it can be in all temperatures and and be, um, used also, um, really weatherproof. It's, it's actually waterproof. It can rain on it and everything. So we got this and we tested it out already at the station. I, I had, um, front the, or excuse me, I had, um, um, I had, uh, Gary Olemowski, the project administrator, come down on a sunny day and I asked him if he had about fifteen minutes to come down and put it up on one of the sunstays that we had. Uh, face it to the sun and you can see it clear as day. And we can then put up our drone. We could see all the way that we were watching airports. Well, yeah, airplanes like we were probably going out with us and you do, yeah. So, uh, it's really good. So, I mean, it's available to, you know, any, any events that we do and also for drone operators, incident command. Uh, so yeah, hey, I mean, we want to have it for the opening of the dog park or nature trail. It's available for that too, to do those type of things as well. So, um, once again, it's a, it's a, a great addition to our project. Uh, a couple of other things too. We, uh, are still working with Tim Lowly to find out where our town halls are. Um, everyone's in the waiting period. So, uh, just, you know, they kind of reassure us and, uh, they will show up. It's, uh, the anchor, it's concrete day. Uh, a couple of things. Uh, the last coffee with the chief was April twenty-first and I do want to say thank you to our guest speaker. Uh, that came over as Detective Hartman from Oxford Falls Police Department. He gave a wonderful speech on, um, scams. Uh, and this time of the year, a lot of people are getting hit and they're getting scammed, uh, trying to, uh, especially with Patrick Terry money time. Um, yeah, but I know some people recently have got some, uh, just in the past couple of days, they've had some, you know, eighty-seven money to, uh, you know, that kind of thing. So, uh, it's awareness really people. And so he, the detective department was just enlightened everybody of what's on the board and the, uh, the troubles that, uh, can occur if you, you know, you're conscious of some of these things. Uh, and then also please join us for our next one, which is going to be Thursday, May thirtieth at nine AM. Once again, it's here and it's a great time. A lot of things also, um, you know, once again, that I will change for the record, the dates of the statistics for, um, they should read that they're actually for April third, the first through April fifteenth. And those are going to be for, uh, first of all, cat entries. We had five hundred cat entries. We get fifteen incident reports, four motor vehicle accidents, four incident, or, excuse me, four arrests and forty-three traffic citations and double forty-six million.
Thank you for the very thorough report, Chief. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next up, Building Department. Mr. Rushik. Orient.
Good evening, everyone. Father, please, we're doing this sun, but it's, uh, it's affecting our apartment very well. The joy is this morning. I have this world home to bring out today, but I decided that, like, who wants to know this? But, uh, the joy is the spring. Uh, yeah, we've had, uh, our complaints have just increased significantly. So, uh, anybody who wants to come to part of time to the building department would love to have. But we are going well. Um, fortunately, a lot of them were tall grass, uh, implants and dried up and people cut their grass and, uh, and we, you know, were able to accept that as, uh, looking positive moving forward, knocking down some of the pile of implants again. So weather is very important. Um, oh boy, food truck permits. Uh, we've got, uh, three of those. I shall put your little food truck, which is like, we go out there, nice options. Uh, Grace Covenant Church is, um, is, uh, sitting there last, uh, instead of, uh, client. So so you're going to break ground here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we've got the preserve homes that which is still moving forward. We have, uh, the, uh, turn of other heat houses. Uh, we go, so we're planning to bring more. They're really moving on that fast and it's going very well also. The weather is helping. From the grading issues during the winter time, it's very hard to grade. Uh, being a spring, just the, the wet dirt causes a lot of problems. It goes with everything from machinery to just people trying to uh, hit a certain grade and it's all changing now. So we're excited about that. Um, we've got, uh, most of them are new. Another step forward to them. It's always positive. We're getting, we're still getting contractors that are continuing to, uh, buy in new applications for work. Right now I'm shaking. I think I might have mentioned this last time. The chief is a very busy street person. I currently have nine houses under construction. I'm shaking and it's, uh, we're looking at not to be, uh, two or three more. So I don't know what's measured about this street issue, but producing several, uh, home developments. Uh, I think, uh, roll call, um, that was a, a long process, but, uh, it's a year of evolution. Taking several people to bring big developments to actual parish or organization. There's fronts out and there's great, um, land, cement, uh, it's just, it's a big process and we're, we're really, we're quite open to that right now. Like let's say the three quarters way to improve it, probably, well, probably about three developers and we've got, um, uh, recently we had, uh, Pride One, uh, come in with a plan. Probably about, you know, about eighty-two homes and some current parcel developments off of Bagley. Redwood, uh, also approached us recently. That's, uh, potentially provide the most advanced base battery. They're looking at, uh, going behind it. So again, they'll be looking at elching uh, and all but to their current, uh, Redwood, which is out of the township, but it'll be right next to, uh, this development. Lots, just there's, there's a lot going on, a lot of, uh, lot of potential, a lot of citizens and, uh, what we're best to take here at this stage and, uh, I'm pretty excited because it is very vast beach right now. My lawn is, uh, it's kind of exciting, especially that as these things start to add, we see dirt get pushed and rolling and put in. So, uh, with that, uh, this concludes my report. Anybody else have questions?
Thank you, Tom. We appreciate it. Are there any questions from the board?
No.
Thank you very much. All right. Uh, next up, Legal Counsel, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, two quick items. When you reach the point of discussion under whole business, if you have questions about the pre procedure or process for the zoning resolution, uh, I'm certainly prepared to address that. And then when you reach the, uh, portion of the agenda for resolution twenty-seven, if you would consider that as a formal's safety levy renewal, resolution of necessity.
Yeah. To make sure that language is Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Um, I'll give you a minute to write, but next up, let's go off to Brian Gillett.
Oh, mine's really quick. So the only thing really going on right now for the most part is, um, our audit. So we have an audit every two years. Um, so that's what we're working on. We've given them everything. They come back with questions, uh, back and forth. We gave them everything, uh, a couple of weeks ago and they said, oh, we're probably not going to get to you until probably, you know, in July or August. And then all of a sudden, we're doing it all right now. So that's a good thing. So we might be done early. Uh, that's a major thing going on right now. That's about all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gillett. Um, next up, Old Business. The Board of Trustees received recommendation from the Zoning Commission Board regarding application number twenty-two-four zero-zero-six-three submitted by Builders and Developers Company Incorporated on behalf of property owners Joseph and Suzanne Hollow, requesting that the current rural residential zone parcel number two-six-one dash two-zero dash zero-zero-three at, uh, seven-six-one-seven Lewis Road be rezoned into a planned residential development for single-family detached residences. The Board of Trustees held a public hearing on Saturday, April twenty-seventh at ten o'clock AM for residents who wish to present testimony. And we heard, um, a lot of it. And we're always grateful when our constituents are, uh, willing to come and to share their, their views and their perspective. And, um, I just want to also read from, uh, Mr. Winter, Ed Winter, our Chair of the, um, uh, Zoning Commission, who said that, "The board discussed and passed the following motion to recommend denial to the Board of Trustees for the requested map amendment change described in the application number previously said on behalf of the owners previously noted." Um, key elements for the recommendation varied, but included no significant changes to the request from the previous submission for the same parcel that the board recommended denial for on January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, not in alignment with the comprehensive plan from twenty-nineteen and associated zoning map infrastructure parentheses sewers, roads slash traffic. There was no service letter for the sewers. Um, that is from our zoning commission. That is the recommendation of the zoning commission. With that, I will move to consider action on, um, this development request, the zoning change, excuse me, zoning change by Builders and Developers Incorporated. Is there a second to consider action?
Second. Thank you.
Okay. And to consider action on this, trustee Alton?
Yes.
And trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barry?
Yes.
Very good. Uh, I believe the board in an interest, in the interest of being, um, fair and impartial, uh, had multiple resolutions drafted on this. Is that correct, Mr. Matthews?
That's right. With the public hearing that was conducted Saturday, the twenty-seventh, this hollow requested zone change is now ripe for the board to make a consideration. Under the code, the board has the option to either adopt or deny the recommendation from the zoning commission, or it could adopt the recommendation with some record, uh, some changes, some modifications. I did prepare three separate resolutions for the board's consideration. If the board is inclined to adopt the recommendation from the zoning commission, I also prepared for each of the board members, a memorandum, which, uh, provides a synopsis of Ohio law according to the basis for the acceptance of the recommendation, addressing the township's comprehensive plan. The, uh, validity of a resolution that reduces density in a residential area of the township. Features such as preserving the character of the, as I understand it, the rural nature of the Lewis Road area and how that can legitimately be used to support the recommendation. And then addressing a few other features, including the incompatibility of the higher density use that is proposed, the preservation of open space aesthetics, traffic concerns, drainage and erosion concerns as well. So that memorandum was previously provided to the trustees individually for their consideration. But at this stage, under the statute, you don't need to do one of those three actions.
Thank you, Jim.
And if there are any further questions, let me know.
I would just add that what we heard Saturday, um, was not really much of a presentation on the part of the folks trying to justify, um, the zoning change. So I will just ask, is there a motion or a second to approve a resolution that would overturn the recommendation of the zoning commission and therefore approve this development? There is not. Um, I would note that all but two of the at least forty people present um, in the public hearing on Saturday noted that, uh, if this property were to be developed within the rural residential zoning code set forth, um, so that other folks on Lewis Road can, uh, have their own, uh, sanctuary, as it was put by one, um, then they would have no objection to, uh, going through the current uh, zoning code. And for that reason and for others, I feel that, um, I think that's, that's probably warranted. Um, with that, uh, Mr. Matthews, I'm not sure the best way to make this motion, but I will ask, is there a motion to approve a resolution? And the resolution number would be, I believe, if we just add one to the one that we have, uh, whatever the last one.
Is it thirty?
Thirty. I think so, yeah.
So it would be resolution thirty, uh, a resolution denying this zoning amendment um, and supporting the recommendation of the zoning commission. Is there a motion?
Tell them.
Oh, second.
All right, we get my
right in here. Yeah, we put you on the spot there, but
It's all right. So we had, uh, trustee Alton, you, um, moved?
No, trustee's bear moved, trustee Cole second.
Okay. And then to approve the
Resolution thirty.
Resolution.
And it's deny, denying the zoning amendment, supporting the recommendation of the zoning commission.
Okay. So I will take roll call on that. Uh, trustee Alton, do you agree?
Yes.
Trustee Cole, do you agree?
Yes.
Trustees Barry, do you agree?
I do, yes. Can we make sure that the, um, the rural residential, this be put into?
The minutes? Yeah. So Jim compared a very thorough, um, memo regarding township zoning considerations that he kind of briefly summarized here, uh, and, and the conclusion here essentially reads that the township has a legit Uh that he kind of briefly summarized here, uh and and the conclusion here essentially reads that the township has a legitimate interest in maintaining. The rural residential character of these portions of the township's zone under rural residential classification. The township thus has a legitimate legitimate interest in protecting immediately surrounding already developed rural residential properties. From incompatible high-density uses within the township. Uh and is further supportive of the rural residential classification. Our interests of preserving open space, aesthetics, topography, water quality, drainage and erosion concerns among others. Um so we'll we'll make sure that that is added to the minutes as well. Yes, good point. Good point.
Yeah, resolution thirty?
Uh yeah, this would be, yeah, let's just make sure that number's right. Yeah, thirty, thirty, twenty.
Now we'll go inside the green?
Yeah.
We're gonna sign it tonight.
Yeah, and Jim can, if you didn't get the license, Jim can get the two more minutes. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. This should be quicker, moving on to new business items, uh new business A, building department resignation, Ashley Esbel, do I have a motion to approve reservation?
Uh move.
Second.
Okay, and to approve the building department resignation of A, Esbel, uh trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustees Barrett?
Yes.
New business item B, quote DNS Technologies Power to Fitch Road Sign, three thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and five cents, uh move to approve?
Second.
Okay, and to approve the quote for DNS Technologies Power to Fitch Road Sign, trustee Alton?
Yes.
And trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yes.
And new business item C, quote DNS Technologies, install outdoor junction box, digital side town hall in the amount of one thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents, I'll move to approve? Second.
Okay, and to approve the quote for DNS Technologies to, for the junction box, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustees Barrett?
Yes.
New business item D, as described by uh Administrator Yonoski, it's a great item, we're gonna move to table it, just to make sure we get our ducks in a row. Is there a second to table?
Second.
Okay, and to approve tabling uh the agreement with the two thousand twenty-four CDSG supplemental grant, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yes.
New business item E, proposal Kaihoga Fence LLC Guardrail Replacement in the amount of eleven thousand dollars and so, uh eleven thousand seven. Eleven thousand seventy-seven dollars, I don't know why I couldn't say that, I'll move to approve, second.
Ken, is this on Usher, where is this, Eric?
Yeah.
Oh, this is more sporadic between Oshie.
Yeah, okay.
From Usher to probably just before the soccer field.
Okay.
Which just before Sterns.
Right, right. And is this coming out of the force account?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect.
And we we appreciate you making this happen, I bet Garbiel has beat the, beat the crap out of us.
So, yes. Yes, tonight, yeah.
So we, we have a motion and a second?
We do, I need to, yep, and see if we approve the uh the Garbiel replacement, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yes.
Great, um new business item F, this is a very exciting item, I'll ask the administrator to briefly touch on it. It's OHM Consultants Proposal Town Center Streetscape Improvements in the amount of uh. One hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Um I said, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's an exciting, an exciting thing, Gary, do you want to talk about it?
Yeah, I think it is an exciting thing, I think we've, we've put in a lot of effort to uh create the vision, you know, the township player and guide studio. Uh this is really essentially taking the next step um and going through the feasibility process. Um so again, I mean, there's gonna be a number of public engagement meetings, uh there's gonna be a number of high-level discussions, but. Uh really, it's taking that idea and now putting it on paper to see what a reality is, so yeah, we're we're excited about it. Uh if if this contract is approved, hopefully, we will have that plan by the end of this year, and so let me settle the fold with everything.
Absolutely, so it's very, very, very exciting, uh would encourage all you folks in the audience or watching online to attend these. Uh public participation meetings so that you can give your two cents for what our our town center at Sterns and Bagley should look like and the different. Uh aesthetic improvements to make it a place that we can all uh all enjoy and all the different parts of our community um can uh can be a part of and be represented in. So with that, I will move to approve new business item F.
Second.
Okay, and to approve the OHM Consultants Proposal for the Town Center, Streetscape, trustee Alton?
Yes.
And trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yes.
Uh new business item G, Fire Department Resignation, our Frank, as um. Described by uh the acting chief Lieutenant Delhazan, I'll move to approve, second.
Okay, and to approve the resignation of our Frank, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yeah.
Um new business item H, quote Krikowski Tractor Sales Excavator in the amount of sixty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-seven. Dollars and ninety-two cents out of Northeast Ohio Regional Super District Cost Share Funding. Um I'm gonna make the motion to approve this here, but Eric, I don't know if you want to speak to this at all and and a little bit about what this will allow you guys to. To do over in the service department, Gary, you're welcome to chime in, but I I think we've continued to invest in you guys in in your equipment and I think it's exciting.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, this will aid in quite a bit of stormwater uh remediation as far as. Um it's, it's the type of equipment that you definitely want as far as cleaning ditches out. Um and that sort of thing, so that that will be its primary job. Um it can do a lot more things, but that's what we find it is quite a bit for this piece of equipment.
Very good.
I, I think Eric has really done a great job with the equipment we've had. Um right now, I think he utilizes a backbone for for uh most of this, so this mini excavator is really much more nimble, much more efficient piece of equipment. Can get in the areas that are very difficult to get into, um so now, uh you know, depending on the vote, I thank you for, you know, at least entertaining this. Um one thing I will make mention that the cost share um contract will will be coming. So that'll be have to be approved by the board at some point.
Okay, yeah, and then we'll have to do a um. A budget um adjustment also, so you add that to revenue and that expense.
Right.
Doesn't change the total bottom line, but it uh gets everything in the right buckets.
Okay. Very good, uh with that, I'll I'll move to approve the quote.
Second.
Okay, and to uh approve the quote for the tractor sales excavator, trustee Alton?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yes.
And trustee Cole?
Yes.
Uh new business item I, estimate Chuck's custom tr- uh truck and trailer, uh bedrock steel flat red and in flat bed. And installation in the amount of five thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents, I know these trucks are expensive to uh to maintain, I'll move to approve. Second.
Okay, and to approve the estimate for Chuck's custom truck and trailer, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustees Barrett?
Yes.
Uh new business item J, this does not require a vote, but I wanted to make sure it was on the agenda for public awareness. Um about a week ago, the board was contacted by the uh Office of the Kaihoga County Executive. Uh indicating an interest in applying for uh congressionally directed spending, so these are federal earmarks made at the. Uh congressional level and in particular, uh the county would like to apply on our behalf uh to improve uh Fitch Road. So to put sewers and sidewalks and 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 streets, obviously Sterns is a huge undertaking for them, Fitch. Will also be a huge undertaking for the county, I think it's really exciting that uh that they're they're moving in the right direction and competing for. Uh all the dollars that they can here, both at the state level and at the federal level, I think we're really uh we're on their radar and. Uh we've we've all signed and sent this uh this letter, but I wanted to make sure that folks were aware of it, because I I swear every time I'm out. Uh at at a restaurant around here or at a bar, uh somebody's asking me how things are going on Fitch Road and uh it's nice that we have something to point to, so. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything, we don't need to vote on it. Good, Gary, you're good?
No, I just would, I second what everything you said, I think it's an important project for the township, I mean, the two main endpoints there are, you know. People walking on the side of the road.
Yeah.
So skinny sidewalks on that street is really important, and then, you know, we got failing septic. And so getting a sanitary sewer and I can't think of counting enough, and they're trying some funding, so any any source of funding.
Well, and I I can say this anecdotally, but I think Tom will know exactly who I'm talking about, you know, there's an individual who every time, he lives on Fitch Road, every time I see him. He asks me how it's going to get sewers in there, because he's got a septic tank that is failing. That he knows if he has to pay, you know, twenty grand to replace, he might very well be required to tie into a sewer. Right after that, uh and that that, you know, system would then be obsolete, so I think a lot of folks in that area, granted, there's a few that never want to see a sewer on on Fitch, but. I think the vast majority of folks uh just want to do the right thing, so uh it's important that we get them the tools to do that. So consent agenda items available on request, meeting minutes, April fourth, twenty-twenty-four, special meeting minutes, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, and public hearing minutes, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Um before moving to approve, I I was looking at this and I should have sent an email to you guys beforehand. Um it looks like we have, yeah, we have dispensing with the pledge on the special public hearing, and we did actually do the pledge. Um I had noticed that, I think you have to know, um so I apologize for not giving that correction to you guys sooner, but. Alright, can you just make sure that's?
Yeah, which one was it, the twenty-seventh?
Yep, it's the special public hearing.
Yeah, the twenty-seventh, yeah. We can just say, I'll stood and.
I'll stood and recited, yep, and uh we we did dispense with the pledge at the meeting before that, but just not. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Want to make sure our moves are accurate. Um. Okay, with that, I will move, uh sorry, and also consent agenda item B, uh payments, uh payment of bills and payroll, warrants, vouchers and EOs. I will move to approve the consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
Okay, and to approve uh both consentage items A and B, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yeah.
Uh requisitions, uh requisition A, FD twenty-two-four-zero-three payable to vital floors and renovations amount not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars, I'll move to approve, second.
Okay, and to approve the fire department uh payable for vital floors, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yeah.
Um resolutions, uh resolution twenty, uh resolution twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four, reapproach, reo- uh reappraisal slash budget adjustment transfers, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, and to approve resolution zero-two-five dash two thousand twenty-four, the reappraisal and budget adjustment transfers, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustees Barrett?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-six, twenty-four expenditures slash department purchase orders, I will move to approve.
Second, sorry.
Alright, uh trustee Cole, second that one, and then to approve. Resolution zero-two-six expenditure and department purchase orders, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yes.
Uh Jim, correct us if we need to change the language on this at all uh for the minutes, but resolution twenty-seven, twenty-four. Uh four mil safety levy renewal, this is a resolution of necessity. Uh submitting to the electors Olmstead Township the question of levying a renewal tax in excess of the tenement limitation for the purpose of providing and maintaining. Fire protection, police protection, ambulants and emergency services at a rate not exceeding four mils, reach one dollar evaluation. Um for a continuing period of time to be certified for the ballot, uh for the ballot for the general election to be held November fifth. I believe that would be four mils for each. That's not one dollar valuation, right, Jim, that's that's probably uh four mils for each.
Oh, it is four mils for each, though.
It is for each dollar, okay, gotcha. Um. And I will just want to add before we we move this, that, you know, we did discuss and debate whether or not to have this be for a. Five-year period of time, which is the maximum you can do under Ohio law, or to have it be a continuing period of time. Um this township is growing, um the needs of its police and fire services are growing. Uh an increasing proportion of this rev- uh this levy, uh while it was initially, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was initially came forward largely for capital costs.
Right.
To help the police and fire department meet their capital needs, uh we're seeing more uh personnel needs and. I think it makes sense for a levy of an operational nature to be for a continuing period of time, because. Uh if, you know, the worst were to happen, this were to come up for renewal fifteen years down the road, for some reason, you know, folks get confused and vote it down, you'd be in a position where you're. You're laying off firefighters or police officers or both.
Yeah.
So with that, I will, I will move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, and to approve resolution zero-two-seven dash two thousand twenty-four, the four mils levy renewal, uh resolution of necessity. Trustee Alton?
Yes.
And trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yes.
Alright, resolution D twenty, uh resolution twenty-eight, twenty-four, establishing a fire fund reserve balance account. The trustees establish a reserve account within the fire fund for the purpose of accumulating resources for the payment to uh of salaries, benefits, social security and Medicare workers compensation, unemployment compensation. Training services, contracted services and repairs and maintenance, folks, why do we have this if we already have the fire funds? Uh we have uh folks who are hired on these uh safer grants that are for three-year periods of time, as we discussed earlier. Um if we need uh money to hold us over or hold us through um a a period where uh we're we're waiting on additional levy dollars or whatever is necessary. Uh to continue the employment of individuals hired on a safer grant, uh this reserve account will help us make sure um that we are. Um that we we have some some flexibility and some cushion, so uh with that, I'll move to approve resolution twenty-eight, second.
Okay, and to approve resolution zero-two-eight dash two thousand twenty-four, establishing a fire fund reserve balance count, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustees Barrett?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-four, public service full-time employee hire Connor Bates. Um I believe Director Williams has sent a uh justification to us on this, um and and like. The police and fire department uh having to grow to meet the needs of the growing community, uh the service department. Uh has to also, and this is right in line with uh these equipment purchases, equipment is only as good as the guys that. Uh you can have operating it, and from what I hear from Director Williams, this is a an upstanding individual who will make a great addition to the uh department. I believe that in the last three years, you are the only department uh that has not received additional personnel. So with that, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, and to approve resolution zero-two-nine dash two thousand twenty-four, the public service full-time employees Connor Bates, trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustees Barrett?
Yeah.
Um any other matter that may come before the Board of Trustees, I believe you're gonna need executive session tonight. Uh are there any other, I, it doesn't look like we have any public comment, do you have any public comment on Zoom, Brian, I don't think so.
No, there's no chats.
Okay.
We do have three, two deep lines.
Okay. With that, um I'm gonna move to, you know, into executive session um for option one. To consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation, investigation of charges or complaints against a township. Uh employee official licensee or regulated individual.
There is a hand raised.
There's a hand raised, oh, there is now, there wasn't a second ago. I have submitted question writing. Anne Radney?
Okay. Uh.
Does someone have?
We have? Do we have a question writing for Ms. Radney, does anybody have email or?
I don't have it, no.
How was it?
Submit. Oh, I know we have one from, uh who was the individual you were gonna remind me about with the rec center? Yeah, do we have that?
Sorry, another one in there?
I.
Yeah. We email your, she emailed to Olmstead Township.
Oh, she emailed it to admin, admin at olmsteadtownship.org this morning, did we?
Oh, this morning?
I mean, I don't, I don't.
That goes to all of us, right?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Maybe, so many guys can see it, let me see if I can see it.
We can allow her to take herself off mute if she'd like to ask a question.
Oh, and you just, yeah, give me that, thanks.
That's not for her, that's for the member.
You can, um Ms. Radney, if you'd like to unmute and ask your question, you're welcome to do so, I'm not sure that we have record of uh submitted question. Um but I will read, we do have a public comment um that was emailed to Gary, um and I'll read it, it says, this is. Uh OV Gosh from Howard Hannah, and I live on seven-two-seven-two Lewis Road. Olmstead Township or Falls do not have a nice community or senior center, Jenkins Place is lacking features that a nice community center should offer. We have Columbia Park where I list and sell, but we cannot have a well-planned senior development that caters to senior living. I am doing a downsizing seminar in Southwest General Hospital, bringing in new speakers to help baby boomers transition into homes and find out, finding out. That there is a demand for this kind of housing development, since this group makes up a very large percentage of housing needs. Uh P S, please address this in the meeting this evening, so we can make sure that's part of the minutes uh for Ms. Gosh. Uh I'm not sure where exactly to start, Lisa, you're welcome to chime in, because you were on the board with me at this time, but uh the. If if we were to do a community center or rec. if if we were to do a community center or rec center, if that's what voters want, if that's what voters are willing to approve, that has to be a joint venture with the city of Homestead Falls. We, the taxpayers of Homestead Township are not going to uh solely pay for an amenity that would be enjoyed by uh largely folks from the city of Homestead Falls. The funding mechanism to do that would be a joint uh recreational district, which we argued over bylaws with the city for about nine or ten rounds, Lisa.
That waste, yeah.
And and that's not a unilateral thing. It's not like you create this recreational district, then all of a sudden, boom, you're 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 levying uh money and 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 you're creating, building a rec center. That's just the mechanism to uh accept a rightful grants um to to plan recreational facilities potentially. Um and i- if there were, if if this question were to come up about building a rec center, the appropriate avenue is through a jord, which could then submit the question to the voters of both Homestead Falls and Homestead Township. Both communities would have to say yes. And and in that, to whatever the mileage amount might be, I don't even know what the mileage amount would be for us to build a rec center because we don't have a jord. Um, so sadly, that's um that's where things stand with uh with those types of services. And I know uh certainly not everybody is uh supportive. Some people are extremely supportive and at the end of the day, you let the voters decide. But if you don't have the mechanism to let the voters decide, then uh the status quo will prevail. I don't know if uh you want to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's what's been happening. I I think the jord maybe three years ago was started this process, three, three to four years ago.
Three or four.
Yeah, um. And um it never came to fruition and just kind of you know, we didn't have a willing partner because we didn't have a willing partner. It just didn't move forward. So.
Yeah, we can't afford to do it on our own.
No, we cannot.
Yeah, it's too costly. Uh, insurance is too costly, you know, on and on. So.
I don't think it's fair or appropriate.
Need to have a jord or something like that um to help us uh do that.
Share the burden. Yeah, it's not fair or appropriate for our people to pay for to, you know, the whole thing. I'm I'm all for collaboration. Collaboration's great. I'm all for democracy and letting people have say. Uh, but yeah, if you're not going to collaborate, then it's pretty tough to do a joint venture like that. So.
Right.
Um, that is.
Sounds like she was looking for senior developments as well, which we kind of have.
We have some, yeah.
I mean, we have Columbia Park. We have the Renaissance Senior Living.
That's right.
Yeah, we do have options here.
Yeah, that's a good point, Tom. Um, you have a question from Ms. Randy?
Yes, she did uh write it here. So I I didn't see it on my phone. Like, I didn't get it come to me. So I don't know if.
Yeah, maybe there was a typo on the address. I'm not sure. I didn't.
So, yep, so I'll just read her um her question and then you guys can answer. So it says, on April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four, reporter John Benson wrote an article to Cleveland dot com about West Shore Communities Creating a Regional Sewer Solutions Task Force. Participants are Bearview Park, Bay Village, North Homestead, Lakewood and Rec River. With flooding issues still present in Homestead Township, I am wondering why Homestead Township, as well as Homestead Falls, have not joined the task force, or are we not considered part of West Shore Communities?
Those are very good questions. Um, I don't know. One of you two wants to go first? You're welcome to.
Or not part of West Shore. Um, so uh and and really, we saw that article basically the same time that what took us by surprise. We weren't, we had no idea.
Yeah, we certainly weren't approached or anything like that.
Um. We we had something on this. I just can't find it. I mean, at at the end of the day, these are the folks, I I don't want to collaborate with with anybody on stormwater or or whatever it is, but one, we certainly weren't invited to do so. We have our own undertakings in terms of managing stormwater. We did this Dan Tech study. We've been collaborating with the county. We've been working with the sewer district. We recently had uh an amend uh an item on our agenda to actually add a part of Fitch Road to the sewer district off of North Homestead's grid, which is really hard to do. Um, so that that was a big win. Um. And yeah, I would just add that I think that those uh those I applaud those communities for for undertaking that collaborative effort. Um, I I would just say that they are, they all maintain sewers. I think that's probably a fair point, too, in in the county. County maintains uh maintains our sewers. So Gary, I don't know if you want to speak to this.
I mean, I think you guys hit the nail on the head. We were never, I mean, the first we heard of it was through a, you know, a news article. We were never approached, never given a seat at the table, so to speak. Uh, so it's not for lack of not wanting to, it's just for lack of not having the opportunity.
Yeah.
Right. I think we're, since we're not part of that whole West Shore conglomerate, we're so, you know, and we're so based here. So um we just were, we're never notified. I mean, we just were never notified this is taking place.
We're we're happy to collaborate. We'll continue to take collaborative approaches to stormwater and and other issues. So hopefully that's a satisfactory response. We also read the article. We're very interested in it. Uh, parts of it were a little vague, but uh we uh it's always a good message when communities are working together to solve a problem that they're all facing. So. Um, with that, I made a motion to go into executive session um for.
Okay, and to go into exec session at eight forty seven trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustee's there.
Yes.
Okay, we're we're going to go into executive session. I don't think there's going to, or is it going to be anything that we're going to pass afterwards?
Uh, depending on the, um, it looks like Anne said, thank you. So welcome in, but um eh depending on the discussion in the executive session, there may be an item. We can, uh, if folks want to stick around for it, we can walk to the back.
Yeah.
You want to do that?
Sure. We can.
Yeah, we we won't kick you out.
Right. We're going to go into executive session and then uh we'll be back here, you know, just a little bit if you want to stick around. That's great. Thanks.
I'm going to move to take us out of executive session at eight fifty four P M.
Okay.
Second.
And to uh and to uh come out of executive session trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
And trustee's there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good. Um, well. I move that we amend the agenda um and move that the board accept the employee severance agreement signed by Robert Crowe and by David Gale on behalf of I A F F local twenty eight forty five effective May second, twenty twenty four, and that the board hereby accepts Robert Crowe's resignation. Second.
Okay, and to approve the amendment of the agenda and the resignation of Mr. Crowe. Trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee is there?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes. Very good. All right, folks, um, I'm going to move to adjourn the meeting unless there's anything else at eight fifty five P M.
Second.
Okay, and to uh adjourn trustee Alton?
Yes.
Trustee Cole?
Yes.
Trustee's there.
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.
Two seconds.
Tom.
They adjourned.
Tom.
Okay.
Second.
All right, cool. Sorry. Okay, guys, the meeting's ended. Go on peace.
Okay.
Go on peace.
Oh, I understand.
We should call.
Yeah, just call. Yeah.
That's good. It's Father Gillette.
Father.